Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We're going to go ahead and get started. We're going to call the Castle Hills Regular City Council Meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We're going to go ahead and start with the invocation. Pastor Gordon, would you do the honors?
Father in heaven, as we gather here together, we are reminded that we do so in your presence. And we thank you for who you are and for what you do. And Father, I just want to give thanks to you for these seated here this evening, these whom we refer to as public servants. And thank you, Father, for their hearts and their willingness to give of their time and their energies, their talents, their education, their experience for the betterment of this community. And we know that it is their desire to build community. And so, Father, may everything that is said and done here be honoring to you and be exalting to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ our Lord, in whose name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, next, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Delagarza, you want to join, lead us in that, please? Thank you, sir. Mr. Rapley?
Mayor Council, I'd like to introduce to you, come on up, John, John Delagarza. He comes to us with three years' experience in code enforcement and 11 years' experience as a peace officer. He's originally from the San Antonio area, from John Marshall High School. He's married with a family. In his free time, he enjoys fishing and a big Dallas Cowboys fan. We won't hold that against him. Mr. Delagarza was selected out of five applicants for this position. Mr. Delagarza started early in June, has been very effective and active in the community already. As city manager and with the assistance of Mr. Zamarone, we've communicated our goals to Mr. Delagarza and how the approach of code compliance in our community will be based on customer service and education. Ideally, code enforcement in our city is not to generate revenue, but to gain compliance. The administrative end or abatement process is part of the tools we have or Mr. Delagarza has to improve the value, health, and safety of our community. We will also be looking to strengthen our ordinances as it relates to code enforcement under Mr. Delagarza and Mr. Zamarone. John, do you have any words?
I want to say thank you for this opportunity. I hope we can all look well together.
Mr., can you get a little closer and pick up the mic here?
I've already been working well with the community. Everybody's been super nice. I haven't had any issues with anyone. It seems like everybody's willing to work with me on whatever issues or code violations we have. So I just want to keep it up and let's keep our city beautiful.
Okay, next, we will proceed with Citizens to Be Heard. You have three minutes. Pastor Gordon, are you on there? Just for your item? Okay. Mr. Schultz? Okay. And Ms. Jaffet? Item four? Okay, Citizens to Be Heards right now. So if you want to speak, you can come on up. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Laverne Jaffet, 12 Shady Cove. I'm just here to try to help out for whatever in our new code, maybe our codes. In my neighborhood, which is a pud, small lots, the neighbors behind one of my neighbors, one of my neighbors over on Fox Hall evidently have put in for a permit for a regulation basketball court in their yard. And if it's like it sounds like, it's going to be a detriment to about four of my, those lots are so big back there. They cover the back of about four lots in my neighborhood. And for them to have a regulation basketball court in their backyard with the high lights. And I thought, well, my little neighbors would be here. I don't see her here right now. But I know that she's spoken to Mr. Rapley about it. And I'm just here to support denying and letting them do such a thing in our neigh, in the neighborhood. It's not in my pud. It's in, on Fox Hall directly behind, which would be across the, those lots are so big that they cover like three of the lots in my neighborhood that backs up to this. For it to be okay to put a regulation basketball court on a lot that covers, I think those lots back there are about two acres. So I'm just here to deny that, what it would do to the backyards of my neighbors. Does that make sense to anybody I can give a little, it's all the information I know and wherever our new code, the gentleman I believe is in our code compliance that we just introduced?
Yes, ma'am.
He should know about it. Can I ask him questions about it here or what?
So this is just Citizens to Be Heard on non-agenda items. So we can talk to you, or Mr. Rapley can talk to you outside of this meeting and give you a little more information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jaffet. Do we have anybody else here for Citizens to Be Heard on non-agenda items? Okay, we'll proceed to the consent agenda on approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. May?
I move that we accept the consent agenda and approve it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. May?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Joyce? Mr. Gregory? Mr. Gregory, can you use your microphone?
It's rare somebody actually wants to hear me. On the May 11 minutes, page five of five, it said, "Welcome new council members Jack Joyce and Douglas Gregory to the council." I assume that was supposed to be Frank Paul and not Douglas Gregory. In the minutes of May the 19th, let me get this right. It may be June the 9th, just a second. Yeah, June the 9th, page four of six. A motion by Mr. Isbrand to appoint Todd Herman as an alternate member. It passed 401, not 41. 401. One abstention, not four to one. And I was pretty sure there was a syntact, a wrong word used somewhere along the line here, but I'll find that later in, not to Mr. Rapley. Those two things.
Mr. Joyce?
I have one very minor one. Mayor, on the minutes for June 9th, page three of six, Agenda Item Six, in the second paragraph where it's discussing Ms. Fegan's comments. I believe the G A S B is incorrectly identified. I believe what G A S B is, is Governmental Accounting Standards Board. It's confusing it with GAAP, I think, or something. But anyway, G A S B appears to be incorrect.
Okay, unanimous, Mr. Joyce?
That's it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've been given pause to review on the May 11th minutes. There is, and this may be kind of important in the future. On Part Five, Kevin Love noted the state statute cited by Baker pertain to diversion and impoundment.
What page is this, Mr. May?
This is on page two of five.
Thank you.
At number five. You go down to the second line, it says Baker was not impounding or diverting water. I think what he meant was Lewis was not. And I adopt, if I need to, the changes that have been already noted.
Okay, so we'll do it as amendment. We have Mr. Gregory's changes, Mr. Joyce's changes, and Mr. May's changes. All in favor? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, Mayor, I think the, what I actually said was to congratulate Mr. Joyce on his election and Mr. Gregory on his reelection.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Craig. Okay, all in favor of the changes as proposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Moving on to new business, public hearing on the-
Mr. Mayor, since you did that as an amendment, you need to have a motion now to adopt the minutes as amended on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes as amended.
Thank you, Mr. May.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Thank you, all in favor. Unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Schnell, for catching that. New business, public hearing on an application from the Wayside Chapel Evangelical Free Church for an amendment to a special use permit to grade, pave, and stripe additional parking spaces at the property located at 113 Ivywood Circle. Legal description CB 5007B Block 3, Lot 3, to use for religious slash church use. It is 6:42, and we're going to open the public hearing.
Did we skip item 8B? Financial report?
I'm pretty sure Mr. May did everything together. Okay, please proceed, Pastor Gordon, sorry.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, again, thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. We do have our civil engineer on the Zoom meeting. He is waiting to be let into the meeting if you all have any questions to ask of our civil engineer. As you all recall, back on May 19th, this body voted to approve the special use permit for the property at 113 Ivywood Circle, which is immediately adjacent to our church property. And subsequent to that, we had also filed for an SUP to be able to grade, pave, and stripe parking to extend our main campus parking into the backyard of that property as we were allowed to do back in 2015 on three other adjacent Ivywood properties. We have since amended that request, not for a new SUP to do that, but to amend the SUP that this body granted back in May 19th. And it was last week, on July 7th, that the zoning commission voted to approve recommendation to this body to approve that amendment to the SUP. And so I am asking this body in consideration to do the same and to grant this amendment to that SUP. And I remain available to address whatever questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Gordon. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak during the public hearing? Okay, it is 6:44. We're going to close the public hearing. Move on to item number two, discussion of possible action on recommendation from the zoning commission to approve an amendment to a special use permit issued to Wayside Chapel Evangelical Free Church to allow Wayside Chapel Evangelical Free Church to grade, pave, and stripe additional parking spaces at the property located at 113 Ivywood Circle. Legal description CB 5007B Block 3, Lot 3, to use for religious church use and adoption of ordinance 2020-07-14.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Paul?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the zoning committee.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. We have a first by Mr. Paul, a second by Mr. May. Mr. Schnell, let me unmute you one second. Yes, sir.
If Mr. Paul and Mr. May would agree to incorporate into the motion the adoption of the ordinance, this is a zoning matter, so it does need to be adopted by ordinance. So if that could be amended to include adoption of ordinance 2020-07-14. Excuse me, 2020-07-14, yes.
Okay, so amend that, Mr. Paul, Mr. May?
And I second on that basis.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory?
I was not on the council, and this was passed in 2013. But I have a couple of questions. We've turned down in the past people who wanted to do some of things like this because they did not have a traffic study. You're going to increase substantially the number of cars that are going to be milling around Ivywood Circle, which hits the entrance and egress onto 410 from Northwest Military Highway. And I just wondered if there's been a traffic study to show what that impact would be. Exactly, I think you may have in here. I may have just not missed it. How many spaces you're adding here? And third, is the city ready to know that there is an environmental impact fee that people have to pay when they're covering ground with asphalt? Are we ready, that was passed some 10 years ago, at least 10 years ago. Do we know how much that is going to cost the church and are we sure we're collecting that? But first and foremost, the traffic study, the fee is what it is. And how many spaces?
Yes, when we filed for the SUP back in 2013 to expand the parking to grade, pave, and stripe on the three properties, at that time, we provided car counts not only on Ivywood Circle, but on Ralletto Drive and on South Garden View. And what we found is that on any given Sunday, there would be a total of 78 cars that would be parked, that are currently parking on Ralletto, South Garden View, and Ivywood Circle combined. They take up almost all of Ivywood Circle in the allowable spaces. There are no parking signs on one side of the street. And so this is not going to add traffic. This is going to add additional parking spaces to at least get some of those cars to the tune of, this particular project will create 17 additional parking spaces. And so this will actually be taking 17 cars off the streets. It's not going to be adding any more traffic than is already there.
Well, it does concentrate the traffic. You're right, it does take it off, hopefully it'll take it off the side streets. But it does concentrate 17 more cars that have to get into that space. Would they be coming in from Ivywood Circle or the rear of the sanctuary?
They'll be coming in off of Ralletto Drive. The only, the only-
I got it.
Yeah, the only access to 113 Ivywood, 111, 107, and 109, where we paved back in 2015, the only access is from our Ralletto Drive entrance. So there is no, there is no exit to, there's no egress or ingress or egress from Ivywood Circle itself.
And Mr. Schnell, just to verify, I'm sure you probably ducked through that. I don't know that the traffic impact analysis ordinance would require a study for 17 cars. I believe it's like 60 or 160?
I'm not aware that that would be required, and I think the city engineer would have told us in his review of this application, if that were an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Rapley?
Yes, Mayor. And in your packet is a copy of the letter. This was reviewed by one of our engineers, CEC. And obviously, they recommend a special permit to be approved. They're also recommending that a detailed drainage analysis be submitted prior to the start of construction. So there's no mention of anything related to traffic, just anything that can be submitted for a drainage review prior to the permit being approved.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Any further discussion?
The drainage has to be done first before they can start paving the streets. And the fee has to be paid when they start paying the backyard.
Yes, sir. All fees are required in advance construction.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Just one comment.
Mr. Paul?
Sounds to me that really all you're doing is being able to redistribute your parking that you already have on the lot, just putting it closer to the facilities because making use of that house doesn't add another 20 or 30 people coming into the congregation. Thank you.
Mayor, also, I'd like to mention Chairman Solis is on the line. I handed out a memo in regards to this item and what zoning took action last Tuesday night as well.
Mr. Solis, would you like to make any comments?
Just, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity that we were able to review everything that we talked to reference to this opportunity. The board, the commission took its time, reviewed everything, and understood that what it was all about. And in particular for us, what we were able to do was to make sure that it adhered to what had been approved. And more importantly, the detailed drainage design was important for us. So the motion was made by Commissioner McCormick, second by Herndon, and it was unanimous that we move it with approval to the council for consideration.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Solis. If there's no further comments, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Gordon.
Thank you.
We'll proceed to item number three, public hearing on an application of the Castle Hills Christian School for a replat. The proposed replat will create a subdivision, re-subdivision plat of Lot 29, Block 1, Castle Hills Edition, Volume 9603, page 185 of the Official Public Records of Bear County, Texas, establishing Lot 31B Castle Hills Edition in the city of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas. It is 6:52, and we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Pinkston, did you have any comments for the public hearing, or did you want to speak on the agenda item itself? So this is just for the public to kind of give us feedback, and then we'll hear from you on the item. Okay, it's 6:53. We're opening the public hearing. Ms. Jaffet? You can come give comments, and then we can answer the questions on the next agenda item. Okay. Ms. Jaffet, you want to come up here and ask your questions, and then we can clarify it on the next agenda item?
I'm sorry. I didn't sign up for this at the time. I was just questioning on this particular item if it's the same piece of property that was asked for an SUP down on West Avenue of just about a year ago. If it's an SUP asking, how can they come and ask for a replat? Am I wrong?
Okay, we'll get into that.
I know, but where is it? I know what the address. Is this behind the big building then? It's not where I'm talking about. Oh, okay, forget it.
This is West Avenue.
Yes, I'm thinking about the one that was here. There's the SUP. Excuse me. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anybody else that would like to speak on the public hearing? It is 6:55. We're going to close the public hearing and proceed to item number four, discussion of possible action on an application of the Castle Hills Christian School for a replat. The proposed replat will create a re-subdivision plat of Lot 29, Block 1, Castle Hills Edition, Volume 9603, page 185 of the Official Public Records of Bear County, Texas, establishing Lot 31B Castle Hills Edition in the city of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas. Mr. Pinkston? I think Mr. Pinkston will go into that right now.
On this?
If you can pick up the microphone, Mr. Pinkston, so we can all hear you.
Yeah, it's the gold one on West Castle Lane at the very back of our property. And so this little diagram you didn't have in your packet, and I thought it might be helpful for just logistically having your bearings. So this is a replat application for the West Castle Lane, Lot 9, Block 1 property. We have had this before you and the zoning commission over, since 2017, over numerous engagements and taking steps in the direction of what took place in 2016. The Christian school at Castle Hills became an independent school. And in 2017, or late 2016, negotiated a lease purchase for the majority of the south end closest to the CVS or across the street from the Sonic of the church's property. The following year in 2017, we, well, right before we got out of 2016, we purchased what was known as the property that you were just referring to behind the CVS called the Griss property. It's at West Avenue and Danny Lane and right near the St. George Church and School. The, we then came in, made two SUP proposals. The first for the original property that we were, since we were an independent school now, we felt at the advice of the city manager at that time that it might be good just to cover all the bases to get an SUP for the property that we were buying from the church. And we did that, and we're approved. And then, and then, growing as a vibrant little school in the community, we saw the need and gained the opportunity to purchase a larger portion of the properties. So in 2018, we came with a second SUP, and you can see SUP 2. It's actually split into two parcels. Part of it was the SUP on the furthest south, closest to West Avenue, is a part of that Griss property, that Danny Lane property. It falls, though, immediately behind the buildings of the school and includes the houses, which we have future plans for. There's a greenhouse back there, kind of a science center kind of a thing. And so that remains in the school's use. And then in 2019, we, right before consummating the purchase of the church properties, everything that you see in, that is bordered in blue, which is probably the majority of their property, I think about 65% of it now belongs to the school. And we brought the replat for all those properties back so that the church and school boundaries were defined and approved here with the zoning commission and then the city council. So today, we're approaching the council with a proposed replat of the West Castle Lane, a Lot 29, Block 1 property. Our goal is just very simply to put that property on the market as a single-family residential, which in the goodwill efforts that we made in reaching out to the community and inviting people in, these were, it's a win-win. It's a win for the city. It will put a property back on the tax roll. It's a win for the school because it helps me pay for this big deal here and keep my school ministry going on into the next generation. And then it's a win for the neighbors because that was their preference is to put some of our properties on the market, which we're in the process of doing, it's single-family residential. in the process of doing it, single-family residential. All of the engineers' comments and questions have been addressed. And our engineer is incidentally available online on the Zoom call, Annie Lowak from M&amp;S Engineering. We've met with neighbors back when we started this process about the intended goals of selling a number of the properties, including this one. And for the single-family residential responses were positive and supportive. The zoning commission, as well as the city council, also affirmed those plans when we were in the S U, in both of those S U P processes. And everybody saw that in a positive light in terms of those who made comment. Thus, our application for approving the replat is before you. And so after years now of working on this project and with the residents, the zoning commission, city engineer, and city staff, we're simply asking the council's approval in this final step of returning this property to single-family residential and eventually back on the tax roll. And if you had any questions, I'd be glad to help you. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor, I'd move approval of the application by the Castle Hills Christian School for the replat as notated in item four on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Second by Mr. Paul. Discussion, Mr. Gregory.
I noticed there's no... When you replat something, when does a drainage study come into play? Because this isn't exactly a flat piece of property. And I don't know how you're dividing it. I couldn't quite figure that out. And if you divide it, has there been a study to show that you won't impact neighbors by putting houses there and the impact of the water on that lot?
So our understanding in the process of going through the process was that that would be the responsibility of the person who bought it to build on it, or the developer who bought it to build on it. It's our, it is not our intention to divide it. Our goal in any property that we sell will be for single-family residential period.
You'd be selling it as a lot, one lot?
Yes, sir.
Then why are we replating?
Because the property line was not drawn. It was contiguous property, contiguous, but there was no property line on. That would be the east end, the bottom, if you're looking at directly at the diagram that I gave you of that yellow shaded end. That property line needed to be defined there to separate it from the rest of the school properties.
So there was no legal definition of this property at the?
That property has belonged to the church for a long part of its history. It had been eternally a playground, which we've been removing all of that equipment. But it has, it has been perpetually a playground. And on any of the lots or plats, there was no define, it was just the boundaries of the church just went back into that, into that area. And when it was replatted with the church and the school, the consummation of this church and school, churches sailed to the school. There's also, in that replat, no defined barrier. We were told that we would need to come back to do that following the consummation of the sale and the approval of the plat for the two, for the church and school properties.
Oh, it's enhancing the property by having an accurate plating?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Joyce?
I have no objection to the replat, but I am a little bit confused by the exhibits that we were provided. For example, a background statement says that the document was originally mislabeled as 29B, and so they want to turn it into Lot 31B. But all of the backup documents, including the plat drawing itself, identify the property as Lot 29B.
So I think...
Did I misunderstand something?
I think Mr. Arteritano can probably help us out with that from Ellen V., is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Give me one second. Mr. Arteritano, can you unmute yourself?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Joyce's question?
All right. Are we talking, are we talking about the property at West and Downey Lane?
No, sir. We're talking about the property to be planted, replanted.
The one on Castle Lane.
The one on Castle Lane. Okay. When, the reason, when it was originally presented to us, the plat was listed as 29B, was shown on the preliminary plat. We recognize that through the plating process and replating process, that Lot 29 no longer existed, and that it was now Lot 31. So it would not be correctly identified, it should have been correctly identified in the beginning as Lot 31B, not 29B. So we had that corrected in the final plating process.
So in the final documents that you all have, that we don't have, it is shown it is Lot 31B?
That's correct. It should be. That's what it should be, is 31B.
Councilman, I tried to give a description in that background that, with that intent, that the final will have 31B.
Okay, so assuming approval this evening, the documents on record will show Lot 31B.
That's correct. Mr. Arteritano?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Pinkston.
Thank you. Thank you all for serving.
And next up, we have item number five, public hearing on a request submitted by Verizon Wireless for a special use permit for the property at 6701 Blanco Road. Legal description, CB 5007A, Lot 7, CHCB 123, being 7.899 acres, more particularly described indeed, recorded in volume 16317, page 275, Real Property Records of Bear County, Texas, to allow the owners to use a property for the installation of a rooftop mounted antennas and equipment for wireless communications. It is 7:08, and we're going to open the public hearing. Do we have anybody that would like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Vince Heebinger, representing Verizon Wireless. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing this site tonight. There is a package, I think, that Louis provided for you. I'm just going to go through there real quick on a brief summary of everything. Page one is, shows the zoning map.
Mr. Heebinger?
Yes, sir.
Can I stop you real quick? This is just the part where the public to give comments, and then we'll proceed to get your, everything from you on the next agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anybody that would like to make comments before we can proceed? Okay, it is 7:08. We're going to close the public hearing and proceed to item number six, discussion and possible action on a recommendation from the zoning commission to city council on a request submitted by Verizon Wireless for a special use permit for the property at 6701 Blanco Road. Legal description, CB 5007A, Lot 7, CHCB 123, being 7.899 acres, for particularly described indeed, recorded in volume 16317, page 275, Real Property Records of Bear County, Texas, to allow the owners to use a property for the installation of a rooftop mounted antennas and equipment for wireless communications and adopt ordinance 2020-07-14-A. Mr. Heebinger?
Okay, thank you, Louis. Where left off is, we try to locate as many rooftops as possible in the areas where there are high-rise facilities such as this, rather than building new monopoles in Castle Hills and surrounding areas, even though they're more expensive. We found this site a few years ago. It went through some ownership changes, but we were able to put this thing together. Page two on that presentation talks about the current events. We're in a pandemic. It's not great, but the networks are all strained as well. The industry's reporting 25% more data and volume, such as these teleconference calls and, and school kids on smartphones trying to get their lessons. So it's difficult for us to maintain. There's a radio frequency map on the third page. It shows where the Verizon facilities are surrounding the site. There is one particularly to the northeast that is at capacity. So this is a capacity site. What we're trying to do is download as much data and volume and calls from that current location on this new location so that we're able to get 911 calls and first responders and data volumes down as much as possible. When I, when I say capacity, we all know the thing that, when you get an attachment on your phone or your laptop or your iPad, and it takes about three or four or five minutes to download, that's what's, that's what's going on with the capacity. So we've upgraded that site, antennas and radios as much as possible. And now it's extremely failing. That's why we're asking you for your support on this. Photo Sims are included in that package. There's a photo SIM from the northwest where the antennas are mounted on the penthouse outside this room. Most people won't know it's there. They're going to be painted to match. They're not sticking out. They're not really visible from the right away or the street side. There's two other photo Sims, one from the east, again, painted to match. One from the west is clearly as possible. We try to eliminate any visibility from those sites. And from that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
I undertake a motion from Council.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. May?
I move that we adopt ordinance 2020-07-14-A.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
We'll second it.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Discussion?
Question of the city attorney.
Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Schnall, I own shares in Verizon. Can I vote on this issue?
Mr. Gregory, unless you own shares in Verizon, that would make the dividend from Verizon constitute at least 10% of your annual gross income, you can vote. If your dividend from Verizon represents 10% or more of your annual gross income, you should recuse yourself.
I knew that was... Well, I can just, I can make it this year. I can vote this year. Okay.
Mayor, we have Chairman Solis on the line for this item too, and then Mr. Bernacki, the property owner for the ensemble, is here as well, if you have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Solis, did you want to give us any comments?
Absolutely, Mayor. Once again, we did meet with, our meeting on the 7th, and we were able to discuss this item. We found it very important for us to be able to support this motion and move it with the affirmative from the zoning commission. We reviewed the expectations of what it would look like, the paint, the antenna, the following to our rules and regulations, as I learned so adequately from the Architectural Review Committee. I will say that I am proud to see the ownership there. Mayor, one of the things, first of all, I didn't get in the earlier time to say thank you to all of you for allowing me to be chair. As we took my term, one of the things I did emphasize was that at the zoning commission, we should be themed, pretty much, "Love thy neighbor as they love thyself." And what's important is that we're working together. What also was important, Edith, that I also implemented was my expectation that if you're a neighbor and you want to come before your fellow neighbors, which we all are, that we should be conversing by ourselves amongst ourselves. I did not like seeing lobbyists, basically contractors, there before us without the ownership being there. So I appreciate both ownerships, both from Wayside, as well as from the ensemble, for being there. They need to know these are neighbors, and they're responsible as neighbors to us. So yes, the zoning commission has moved approval, and it is for your consideration with the affirmative from the zoning commission. But please understand in the future, my expectations, and I've set this out for the zoning commission, is that my expectation that every time somebody brings a zoning case, they should be present if they're the ownership of the property or their organization to make those presentations. They need to know who we are, just as much as we need to know who they are.
Thank you, Chairman. Do we have any other further questions?
Yes, I have one.
Mr. Paul?
Mr. Schnall, is the motion proper? Should we not make a motion to approve the referral? Or instead of just saying we approve this item of these folks doing this?
Mr. Paul, I think the motion to adopt ordinance number 220-07-14A is sufficient. As I mentioned earlier, a special use permit is a, is a form of zoning change, so it does need to be adopted by ordinance. Implicit in the ordinance itself is, and recited in the ordinance itself, is the fact that the zoning commission held the public hearing, as Mr. Solis said, and that it comes with a recommendation from the zoning commission. So I believe that Mr. May's motion to adopt this ordinance by number is sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I have one question from Mr. Heebinger. This is just not knowing anything about the antennas. Is there any potential health, any potential health implications for people living directly underneath them?
No, actually not. Predominantly, when we put a rooftop up, it really doesn't extend through the building roof. It doesn't even give the actual rooftop very good coverage. So it's going projected out. And those things don't, rooftops are probably the most tested by the FCC as far as exposure limits. And, and those things will remain below normal levels all the time with, with the approval of the FCC.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any further questions? Colonel, were you signed it? I'm sorry. I might have missed you. You were, I'm sorry.
Different point, but I do have a question for the Verizon representative. In my line of work that I do for National Disaster Response, I'm an infrastructure branch representative for ESF's 1, 2, 3, and 12. On communications, we're looking at the entire nation going to 3D 911 systems. I was wondering if this system that you're putting in the antennas, is it specifically just for now, or is it also including or capable of providing the 3D 911 for the city of Castle Hills as well?
All of the sites that are coming online recently are bringing in fiber backhaul, which is that dark fiber. And the reason for that is exactly what you're talking about. For 911-related systems, this isn't FirstNet because AT&amp;T handles that, but a lot of the police areas still contract out Verizon for their squad units and stuff of that nature. The backhaul is provided for 5G. 5G will probably not be put on this rooftop because it's so high. It's a little bit more one-block-or-so radius-type dominating, but it will, will handle what you're asking. They'll, they'll upgrade that with fiber immediately in the pathway from backhaul.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Before we call for the vote, Mr. Bernacki, did you have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, thanks, Council. With respect to this for consideration, number one, I appreciate it. Number two, Verizon will do a much better job on the technicalities of it. We have been in discussions with them for well over a year, and we're the second owner that they've had to discuss with this concept. So we feel comfortable with, with everything that they're proposing. In addition to that, as you may be aware, the building is a national historic landmark, and so the aesthetics of this have been reviewed by the state and accepted. I think cosmetically, it'll look much more pleasing than the traditional antenna that you see on buildings. So that's that piece. Second, I do think it's important for everybody to hear from me that we just recently were granted occupancy... that we just recently were granted occupancy in the building. That's the first time in over five years, given its history. And a special thank you to Mr. Rappley and then to the chief. It has been, this is a very complex project, a very complex building with a tremendous amount of sensitivity that we've been well aware of, and you don't get across the finish line of something like this without the fire department being very, very, very involved, and Mr. Rappley being extremely involved. I've probably annoyed him with text messages and emails at nauseam. So I do appreciate the city's partnership. It will be an ongoing partnership, as we're really just kind of in the first phase of occupying. And I appreciate and respect all the feedback that we've received, and we'll continue to be the best neighbors we possibly can, and we don't take that lightly. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay. That being said, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Bernacki. Welcome to the family. Proceed to item number seven. Discussion and possible action on the extension of the Fifth Declaration of a local state of disaster and public health emergency executed by Mayor J.R. Trevino on June 9, 2020. Mr. Rappley.
Yes, Mayor, this Fifth Declaration was put in place on June 9. After discussion with Mr. Snoll, our city attorney, we thought it might be a good idea to extend it to the next meeting to keep it an active declaration.
Thank you. Mr. Snoll, did you have any comments?
Just to echo what Mr. Rappley said, as I think everyone on the council, and I think everyone participating in this meeting knows, because it's hard to miss in our community, the number of folks who are getting tested in our county is increasing. And sadly, the number of people who are testing positive for this disease is increasing. Today, they reported over 850 positive tests in the last day, putting our total well over 20,000 in Bear County. Continuing this declaration keeps us in step with our community and with Judge Wolf and Governor Abbott in our letting everyone know that this is a serious matter and that we should continue to treat it that way. And we should have our declaration active. My recommendation to the governing body is to have it extended till the date of the next regular meeting of the city council. But I don't have my calendar in front of me to give you that date.
August 11.
It's August 11, Mr. Snoll.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Isbrand.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On number seven on this, it says all people 10 years or older are strongly encouraged to wear a cloth face covering. Am I incorrect? I thought that the governor had now determined a mandatory use in certain counties. Is that incorrect?
I believe it's counties with over 20 cases. I think that was the verbiage.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Mr. Isbrand is correct. The governor's most recent order does mandate face masks as opposed to strongly encourage them. The reason that I did not recommend changing your declaration is because your declaration already includes by incorporation the orders by Governor Abbott and the orders by Judge Wolf, so that the mandatory face mask order issued by the governor is active in the City of Castle Hills, is subject to enforcement by our police department in their discretion. But that it seemed like an unnecessary exercise to modify the local declaration because the county and state declarations, as to the specifics, superseded. What's important is for Castle Hills as a city to have an active declaration throughout the duration of the pandemic in order to facilitate and enhance the opportunity to get reimbursement. I know Mr. Rappley is keeping records on the expenditures made by the city in regard to things the city has spent money on as a result of the pandemic, because under the local, inter-local agreement with the county, we can get reimbursement for those kinds of expenses up to a cap. And I think it's important to have an active declaration in that event. The other reason I didn't feel it appropriate to modify your Fifth Declaration or create a new Sixth Declaration about face masks is because, again, the governor's orders and the county judge's orders would supersede it, and the preceding history indicates that the governor was hesitant at first to impose the mandatory mask order and may relax that mask order. And I wouldn't want to have a Mayor Trevino order that says mandatory mask wearing if the governor basically says, no, you can't. So again, I felt that just keeping your standard order in force, but incorporating by reference any orders issued by Governor Abbott or County Judge Wolf would be adequate for the intended purpose of having an active declaration by this governing body.
So, Mayor, I appreciate Mr. Snoll's explanation there, and I understand that we don't want to have to write or rewrite over and over again. Yet, at the same time, I think the average person who doesn't pay attention to all this could look at this and be confused in the disparity here between what we're saying, what the governor's order is. And we already have problems in the state between what's in order one day and what's not in order the next day. So I just feel very strongly that, in particularly given the action that this council has taken, irrespective of this, to require masks in City Hall and all, that it is important for us by having firmer, more clear language in here to be declarative in our belief of how serious a situation this is.
Mr. Isbrand, I completely agree. Mr. Snoll, would it be a problem to add that in there as an amendment?
It would be because of the wording of this agenda item. The options would be to extend the Fifth Declaration, if not till August 11 to some other date. And we could have prepared for you a Sixth Declaration, which would track the language in, I believe it's the governor's executive order 29. I have it in the other room about the mandatory wearing of face masks. The downside is that your order is good for seven days, unless the governing body holds a special meeting to renew or extend it. So I am glad to prepare something like that for your signature later this week. You can sign it, and we, I believe there may be a budget, a special meeting upcoming between now and August 11, where we could time it so that your Sixth Declaration, which would incorporate the mandatory mask-wearing language, could be renewed and extended at one of those special meetings that I believe are on the calendar in regard to the budget. Mr. Rappley may be able to give us some help on, you know, when the next couple of those special meetings are.
Thank you. So what?
I was just going to suggest that next Tuesday night is our first budget workshop, or second budget workshop, and we can include that on the agenda next Tuesday night.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. So what I was going to suggest is we adopt this one tonight to not potentially run into issues with getting any funding back as far as expenses, and if Mr. Snoll can prepare an amended one to strongly emphasize the use of face masks as per the governor.
Yeah, and with that, Mayor, I'd move adoption of this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Second by Mr. Paul.
But what would be the expiration date, sir?
I thought you said seven days, Mr. Snoll.
Well, you can extend it longer than seven days. The mayor, when he issues one, it's good for seven days. So in light of what Mr. Rappley said, if you could perhaps make a motion to extend the Fifth Declaration till July 21. On July 21, the mayor will have signed the Sixth Declaration, and then y'all can consider what extension you want on that.
Very good, thank you. I would make the motion that we adopt this extension till July 21.
Second by Mr. Paul. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, Council. Let's see. Item number eight. Discussion and possible action on a resolution 2020-07-14, authorizing publication and notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation to finance street improvements and drainage improvements in the City of Castle Hills. For as long as I've been active in city government and in the city, the biggest complaint that we've all heard is streets and drainage. And for as long as I've been paying attention, we've been paying as we go. And I think we can all agree that that's not getting us where anybody wants to see the issues. And this is something that we've discussed that would take us closer quicker to addressing more issues in regards to street and drainage. I would like to add that taking this next step would not, if my memory serves correctly, obligate us to spending money just yet, as we had discussed with Mr. Friedman last week. But this is a step in the right direction so that we can begin to do our due diligence and make sure that this is something that's going to work for the City of Castle Hills. Mr. Gregory.
Mayor, I so move that we approve resolution 2020-07-14.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Second.
Second by Mr. May. Discussion.
Mayor, we have Mr. Tom Spurgeon here. He's the bond attorney from McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton. If you have any questions related to this notice of intent, he's here to respond to those.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Joyce.
I do have a question. In the background statement, it mentions that the impact on the tax rate will not affect citizens whose homes have a tax freeze. And I thought, now I may recall incorrectly, but I thought in Mr. Friedman's presentation last week, he differentiated between the INS portion of the tax and the MNO portion, and one was taxable, one wasn't in this circumstance.
Mr. Spurgeon, can you shed some light on that, please?
Good evening, I'm Tom Spurgeon with McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton, and delighted to be here.
Mr. Spurgeon, can you pick up the microphone just a little bit so we can hear you?
Move it.
Up. Yes, right there. Maybe a little bit closer.
Okay, how about that?
That's better.
Okay. All right, very good.
You can just maybe speak up. Are you going to pull your mask down temporarily?
Just a little, because it may be, this may be a little thicker, and maybe that's clearer.
A lot better.
If you're over 65 and you have a tax freeze, your actual total taxes are going to be frozen as of the time that you hit your tax freeze. So to the extent that the city is going to be levying more taxes in order to pay this debt, for those that are over 65, their total taxes that are paid to the city, in this case, if you have a tax freeze, if you have approved that in the city, it will not change their obligation to paying, essentially paying more for the certificates of obligation.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Do we have any further questions?
Yes, while you're up there.
Mr. Paul.
I'm like Mr. Joyce. I remember the conversation last week about two sides. One side is not, and one side is. Now, I believe the side that he said could be taxable, we don't participate in that, do we, Mr. Rappley? Was it the ISU?
The interest in sinking portion?
Do what?
Or go ahead.
That's my recollection.
You do not have any INS tax debt outstanding.
Correct.
The city has no debt outstanding. This would be your first interest in sinking fund taxes you would have levied in at least quite a while. I'm not sure when you actually might have paid off your last bond issue, but I think it's been a while. So you are, you will be levying a new tax if the COs are passed. And, but that will still not change the freeze that is given to the benefit of those that are over 65 years of age that are, or whose home is their homestead.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, Council.
Just real quick, we'll probably bring an agenda item with more detailed projects orientated to the total number of potential amount we're looking to borrow with projects detailed, hopefully at the August meeting, and obviously in line with the process of adopting the budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rappley.
Could I make a request? This may not be allowed, since it's not on the agenda, but related to Mr. Rappley's comment, I was going to suggest that somehow we develop a strategy incorporating all of the debt ideas and perhaps some of the monies we already have and the sign money and everything else to accomplish all this $45 million worth of streets and drainage issues that we have so that everybody knows when their street or drainage is going to be fixed.
And I believe that's in the capital improvements plan. Is that correct, Mr. Rappley? And not to get too far off topic here, but...
It's defined that way, and that's kind of, as I mentioned at the last meeting, how we would develop the list for streets to do the worst streets first that are failing right now, that are, need to be reconstructed. And again, it's based on that percentile, the pavement condition, and I can elaborate on that when we go over detail on projects.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Proceeding on to item number nine. Discussion and possible action on appointment of one person to the Crime Control Prevention District. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor, unfortunately, this position becomes open because of the passing of one of our members. So this is unexpected, and we learned of this late last week. At the same time, we have several appointments that come up for consideration next month. And given the process that we have undertaken of soliciting input from the community before we take votes on these appointments, I'd like to encourage us to consider tabling this item tonight and to put out a call to interested parties, whether it be for this position or the three that are open next month, to solicit input from the community before we take any action, take any vote. If there's not objection to that, I would make that as a motion.
I think that's a great idea, Mr. Isbrand.
I second that motion.
A second by Mr. Gregory. Discussion.
No discussion, Mayor. I have a motion to table.
Thank you, Mr. Snoll. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Item number 10. Discussion and possible action on an appointment to an alternate member to the zoning commission.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. I apologize, sir. You were... Come on up. Sure.
Ray Schultz, 112 Cotillon Drive. On behalf of my wife and myself, we'd like to be considered for, in the Crime Control and Prevention District, either her or myself. It's kind of like a twofer, or, you know, you nominate one, you get two. So her schedule, work schedule, is being redone by her company, so she believes she would be able to actively participate on this board. And as far as my schedule, I know what it is. I know I could participate. So either one of us would like to be considered and appointed for that position. We both have experience in the budgetary process and knowledge of law enforcement activities, equipment, et cetera. We've worked at both civil side, I've worked with federal, with military, and civilian side as well, too. So just want to notify the city council that her and I are interested in that position. And if I have to step down on one or the other, I mean, I guess I could decide, or if that can be allowed, I don't know. Up to you all. Anyway, that's our interest. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Apologize. Item number 10. Discussion and possible action on appointment to an alternate member of the zoning commission. I'm going to go ahead and table this to the next regularly scheduled meeting, because I have not received anything, and hopefully we can put that out with Mr. Isbrand's call as well. Item number 11. Discussion and possible action on an appointment of an alternate member to the Architectural Review Committee. I have reached, somebody has reached out to me, Dr. Anna Armstrong, been an active member of our community, and she expressed her interest, so I'd like to appoint her to that. Item number 12. Discussion and possible action on appointments of alternate members to the Board of Adjust- Item number 12, discussion and possible action on appointments of alternate members to the board of adjustments. Mr. Rappley?
Yes, mayor. There are two alternates left to be appointed by council as a whole. When you all made appointments, I think you selected one alternate mayor, which you were allowed to, but that allowed for two other alternates to be selected. If I had that right, Mr. Snell?
Yes, sir.
Based on the new policy that was developed?
Do we have any nominations from council? Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor, I'd also like to suggest that we put out a call again, since we'll be bundling a few of these up and address them as a whole next month.
Hopefully, we can include this on our social media channels as well? Okay, we have a, wish by Mr. Isbrand, a second by Mr. May. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Okay, old business, public hearing on the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinances in chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. It is 7:41, and we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have anybody that would like to speak on the public hearing? Okay, it is 7:41. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and proceed to item number 14, discussion and possible action on ordinance 2020-07-14-B in regard to amendments to various sections of the city zoning ordinance and providing a penalty for violations of the city zoning ordinances by a fine in accordance with section 1-17 of chapter 1 of the Code of Ordinances or by court action to prevent, restrain, correct, or abate violations with each day an offense occurs, being a separate violation. Do we still have a Mr. Solis on here?
I'm not sure.
I don't think so. Okay. Mr. Snell?
Mayor, this comes before the governing body. Mr. Solis's zoning commission met for the first time on, on July 7. The action that you have before you tonight is a product of the zoning commission that Mr. Isbrand was the chairman of for several years. And then the, the zoning commission that Mr. Rodriguez was chairman of for just under a year. It's been at the city council level since December. The council has held at least five public hearings on this ordinance. At the last regular meeting, there were several suggested revisions that were incorporated in at previous zoning, previous city council public hearings and discussions. We have incorporated a number of suggested changes from members of the governing body as well as members of the public. Since the last meeting, several additional revisions were made to clarify some points. The discussion at the last council meeting concerning the number of parking spaces for drive-in restaurants and the number of parking spaces for offices, changes have been incorporated into the ordinance before you tonight that reflect the actions and comments made by members of the governing body. An additional clarification was made in regard to home occupations at the request of a member of the council. In that list, that talks about certain kinds of services not to be done as a home occupation, like construction services, at the request of a member of the governing body, electrical services were added to that. So it's plumbing, electrical, and construction, and maybe a couple of others. So this ordinance has been through a process with the zoning review committee, which was about nine months that ended in the spring of 2016, and then went through a series of public hearings before several zoning commissions. I think, speaking a little bit for Mr. Isbrand because he had such a role in this, a little for Mr. Rappley because he had a, a large role in getting us to this point, and a little for the zoning review committee, which, which I chaired. I think we're ready for council action. I'm glad to respond to questions from members of the governing body. I believe that the ordinance that Mr. Rappley has circulated includes all of the, the changes that came from the zoning commission and came from, those that came from the members of the public, the members of the city council that were appropriate to include. I tried to explain wherever there was a suggestion that did not seem to be appropriate, a little explanation about that. And I bring, I, I will bring this to your attention. I, I'm sure Mr. Solis, had he been chairman during any of these discussions, would have stayed on to give this introduction. So I, I guess I'm doing it in his stead, and would ask Mr. Rappley if he has any additional comments.
Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, I think Mr. Snell covered everything. As he said, the majority of this encompasses changes from the June 24 meeting, and then recent changes this week from a council member, which I passed out right now. You know, as, as Mr. Snell said, this was a, a long process. Since I've been here as city manager, as far as the short-term rental aspect and the home occupation, and what we did to, to review other cities of what they undertook for and to adopt short-term rental. We've incorporated, I know someone had asked last meeting, an application, a process, a fee, guidelines for safety and responsibility for the operator that they'll have to go through a health and fire and safety inspection. A lot of those were captured from another city that, that had a good plan in place for short-term rentals. So I have no other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor, council, after years in the making, I would move adoption of ordinance number 2020-07-14-B with special recognition to Mr. Snell as chair of the zoning review committee that launched this effort seems like eons ago.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Do we have any, Mr. Mr. May?
I needed to address this with Mr. Snell. I've previously executed an affidavit. Because this is being moved in omnibus fashion, would this be an appropriate time for me to withdraw from any deliberation and vote? I do have an economic interest in one aspect of this ordinance.
Yes, Mr. May, you should, having signed the recusal affidavit, you should not vote on this item, and sadly, I must also add, not participate verbally in the discussion.
Should, Mr. Snell? Should I remove myself from the premises?
You're welcome to stay, except be silent during the discussion and vote on this item due to your stated reason.
Thank you, Mr. May, for being forthright. We appreciate that. Mr. Gregory?
Yes, I have a few things, I have questions about. The first is a minor one, but interesting. Page 60, you have, "The mayor and city manager shall ensure that each newly appointed member of the board is infirmed generally of their duties and responsibilities." That's a typo. It should be informed instead of infirmed. In going through this, I want to go to page 18, section 50-67. Struck out was vehicle parking and storage. No vehicles whatsoever shall be parked beyond eight hours on city-owned, unimproved right-of-way. I'd like to know why this was taken out, because that eight-hour restriction is a big safety feature in our city that does not allow people to park all night long on our streets unless they have permission by the police department. So I would like to retain that as opposed to remove it.
Mr. Gregory, it's my understanding that language to that effect is in the parking ordinance and would be more appropriate in the parking ordinance. That's what I believe the zoning review committee was told when this issue came up. I don't know if she Siemens is there and can speak to that. And it really is important to put it in the parking ordinance, not the zoning ordinance. And I will be glad to follow up with the police chief and the city manager tomorrow. And if that, in fact, is not in the parking ordinance, we will prepare an ordinance for action at the next possible time to get that into the parking ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
Moving on, I'm going to do as fast as I can. Section 50-134 allows non-masonry exterior of sheet metal, you can, the non-masonry exterior of townhouses may not be constructed of sheet metal unless permitted by applicable state law. Do we want to have the front of our houses made out of sheet metal?
No, sir. Immediately, I will tell you no. Unfortunately, the Texas legislature has trumped this issue. And the Texas legislature has said, I believe it's House Bill 2439, that effective September 1 of 2019, if a building material is permitted by any national building code within the last three-year, three-building code cycles, then the city cannot refuse to allow construction with that material. So there is a national building code out there that allows a, a type of construction material which we would find, frankly, totally inappropriate for our city and compatible with our homes and our community. If it's in one of those nationally adopted model codes, we're stuck with it because of action by the legislature. That's why that, that statement is added to 5134. It's to make sure that our ordinance is in compliance with superseding applicable state law, which you'll see a line or two above that is chapter 3000 of the Texas government code.
The third time our great legislature has surprised us with something. Okay, that answers that. I want to move on. I don't have a lot. I'm just moving along here. Just a second. Under 50-255, building area. I, I noticed all the way through 50, all the way through this page and the top of the next page, we struck out enclosed areas for this and that. I assume it can be found elsewhere in the code?
Well, there, there, Mr. Gregory, I don't think there's a limit on unenclosed areas. The main reason changes were made in 5255 and in several comparable sections like 5285 was because in the one-story and two-story office districts, residences are not permitted. So we struck out the part that, that referred to minimum square footage for single-family dwellings or duplexes in those districts. I'm not sure what the concern is about the minimum that's already there for office buildings.
All right, that's a efficient answer. I want to move on. A second. I've noticed that going to parking space, section 5287F, number two, "All-street parking spaces shall be provided on the lot equal to a minimum of one space for each 300 square feet of gross floor area." What is the logic behind raising it to 300 square feet? I think it probably makes sense, but...
Mr. Joyce, wasn't that a correction that you made based off of City of San Antonio?
Yes, it was, and actually based on other cities as well. I looked at Chavano Park in Elmo Heights and San Antonio, and ours was the only code that differentiated something different than 300 square feet.
I think it's prob, it's probably a good change, because that will reduce the number of parking spaces.
So that's why it's, I just wanted to clarify. This way, it's more building and less parking.
Good, good move. Okay, that's taken care of. In fact, I think that's an extremely good move, frankly. Let's see, I'm almost finished. Section 50-bet-385, height regulations. No building shall exceed the greater of eight stories or 120 feet in height. Do we want to continue that height restriction? Because that would preclude anybody who might want to build a larger building on 410.
That certainly is a subject for consideration by the governing body. Mr. Gregory, my sense, my sense is that there are only a limited number of places along in our city, almost all of which are literally along Loop 410, and many of which would back up onto residential streets where it would be economically feasible to build a higher, a building higher than eight stories. The most recent office buildings I think built in the city are the, the Pape Dawson headquarters and the Bank of San Antonio building. I think those are just two or three stories tall. And at least the, the Pape Dawson building was built when I was chairman of the zoning commission or was approved by the zoning commission when I was chairman. And there were concerns by residents on the streets behind that building about the height of that building, even though it was only going to be, I believe, two stories, maybe three. I do think it's important to keep some height restriction so that this governing body and its zoning commission have set some standards. If there is a opportunity for the kind of high-rise development that is something that we feel would be compatible with the community, the applicant can seek a variance on the height limitation, or the council can, if as and when appropriate, take specific action to amend section 50-385. But putting in place some height restriction, in my judgment, would be the most protective thing to do for the community. I wouldn't, I, I would recommend against removing this provision. If the council wishes to change those number of stories or number of feet, that's certainly within your purview and could be done this evening. I, I think we have an architect on the city council, and I think it would be appropriate of, I don't mean to put Mr. Joyce on the spot, but I think his view on this, I think, might be instructive. I have not, in all honesty, I've not talked to him about this at all, but I was just thinking about his background, and he may want to give us some, some professional view, perhaps, on this issue.
Well, thank you, Mr. Snell. To me, this is a very, very sensitive issue in our community, and I would, I would recommend against doing something right here. If this is something we think is really important, I would suggest we take it through the zoning group and ask them to do some homework and some research and talk to the neighbors. I can tell you what the neighbors are going to say. But in any event, I would recommend a more thoughtful process, a more studious process before we make a decision like that.
I like the idea that you can have a variance if it is needed when it comes up. So that's a very fine explanation. I appreciate you both. Moving to page 47.
Mayor, real quick on that item, what I was going to say, what Mr. Snell did about you can get that variance on the height, but also with fire service, too. I don't know if Mr. Snell had mentioned that. Having our platform truck now is 100 feet, 10 stories. So that's something to consider when, with the height with our fire service as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Gregory?
Going back to page 47, it says the question, they talk about the disabled. What is the definition that the city used to define who is disabled? Where is that definition found?
That definition will be found in chapter 123 of the Texas Human Resources Code, which is the reason we have this section in the zoning ordinance. There really are not any material changes to this recommended either by the zoning review committee or the zoning commission, primarily because the only change that was recommended was to incorporate by reference the requirements of that chapter 123 of the Human Resources Code. This, this statute, state statute, says that this kind of a facility can be in any residential district. can be in any residential district in the state of Texas. And so the definitions would be in chapter 123.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Moving to page 50, 58. Mr. Schnall, it was my recommendation, my recollection that number eight of the first section, A, you recommended this be removed?
No. My point on this issue was that there is some litigation under the First Amendment's right of assembly that would make this section potentially subject to challenge. By leaving in the opportunity for someone to have a party or an event in a short-term rental in the G and H districts, we have distinguished our ordinance from the ordinance in another city which was attacked. And the basis for that distinction is that it's one thing for a property that is in the same district as the airport Hilton, which although it's not in our city limits, is really fairly close to our city limits, right between San Pedro and Blanco on Loop 410. It's one thing for us to say that you can't have a party in a single-family house on one of our residential streets if it's a short-term rental, but you can have it if you can find a short-term rental in the G or H district. And that's a distinction that may allow this provision to survive. And it's my view, in order to keep the disruption on neighbors to a minimum, that we start with a short-term rental ordinance that includes this language that would only allow an assembly-type use in a short-term rental if it was in one of our other districts where assembly uses are permitted.
Thank you. And that is it. Thank you, council, for your forbearance.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. And we have one abstention, Mr. May. Thank you, Mr., thank you, council. Next, we have announcements. Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor and council, if I might, a comment about life and life well-lived. I'm confident that I speak for all of us when I extend our congratulations to Bernard and Jessica Judemire on the birth of their son Elliot, who arrived as the newest resident of Castle Hills yesterday. And a little bit longer down the road to life well-lived, on July 29, our good neighbors Milton and Beverly Zion's will celebrate their 70th wedding anniversary. So when you look around Castle Hills, there are many reasons to see and feel joy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul, nothing? Mr. May?
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to again reiterate, I'm looking for citizen initiatives for planning our 70th and 75th anniversary of the city's founding and documenting our history. I want to commend the businesses, local businesses and citizenry alike for using distancing and wearing the mask, because I think we're in a real critical stage. And I have been all over to see clients in some of our facilities outside of this county, and it's concerning to me, because I go into a Valero station or, in one instance, a grocery store where I'm the only one wearing a mask. And we are in a crucial stage. We have to stay the course. I just encourage our citizens to keep doing what they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
I'd just like to announce that councilman, mayor, myself have been working on a business association, and I think we've agreed on an agenda and sort of a operating document as well as an invitation. And so we'll be working with Mr. Rapley, and hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll be announcing a date for our very first meeting, inviting businesses to come and learn from one another. And Dr. Esteban Lopez is going to be our speaker. He's going to speak on how businesses can be best prepared to handle COVID-19. And so we're very excited about that. We're going to be working with Mr. Rapley to get the list of businesses together and hopefully very soon get the invitations out.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Gregory?
I'm just looking at the irony of what's in back of us. Six boxes of face masks made in China. I think that is, the irony is just amazing. I have nothing more to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council. I just wanted to add that I'm glad that we were able to host the free drive-up COVID testing. We had over 1,200 people registered, and we end up having 960 people get tested. I don't know of any other place around here that was offering that type of service. And I'd like to thank all the agencies that were involved with making that happen. It might not look like a lot, but we had members from the U.S. Army Reserves, U.S. Air Force Reserves, doing the testing as well as collaboration with Bear County Fire Marshal and Officer Emergency Management, STRAC, San Antonio Metro Health, Texas Health and Human Services Commission, Texas Division of Emergency Management, and the Texas Military Department, as well as everybody here in the city of Castle Hills that helped. We even had people getting dropped off via, through via trans for some of the people that were less mobile. So all in all, it was a great opportunity to have this in the city of Castle Hills. As Mr. Gregory pointed out, behind us are six boxes. In those six boxes are 12,000 masks that have been allocated for the city of Castle Hills businesses. I picked those up last week. Have a great appreciation for my friends over at Bear County that were able to make that happen and a great appreciation for our councilmembers who all have agreed to help distribute those to our businesses in the city. And we have a little bit more, so I'm hoping that we can get all those out and make a difference, help flatten the curve. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we adjourn for the evening.
Motion by Mr. May. Second by Mr. Paul. All in favor? Unanimous. Have a good evening.